This evening's Board of Education meeting, tonight, Monday, January thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Please join us in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all for joining us this evening. We have a lot of fun stuff to go over. I just want to remind and share with the auditorium that in case of emergency, there are two exits at the rear of the auditorium. There are exits at each side of the stage, and there is an exit at the rear of the stage. I'm going to quickly introduce the dais. All the way to my left, we have trustee Tesne Megji, then we have trustee Mr. Len Hirsch. We have trustee Mr. David Keefe. We have board vice president, Mr. Robert Falorino. I'm board president, Mark Hamburg. To my right, we have our superintendent of schools, Dr. Danielle Gately. We have our deputy superintendent of schools, Ms. Diane Kastangue. We have our assistant superintendent of curriculum personnel, Mr. Ed Chemnitzer. And then we have the district's council, and we have our district clerk at the end. If anyone is here who would like to approach the Board of Education on any topic, we have two open times. The first open time is for agenda items only. The second open time, which is at the end of the meeting, is for anyone anyone wants to talk about. There are slips that get turned into the district clerk. We have a three-minute rule per speaker to make sure we allow everybody the opportunity to speak. We have a fifteen-minute max on the first open time and thirty-minute max on the second open time. And with that, we'll get started. So we're going to get started with our student representative report. Sophia's already smiling over there.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sophia Ing, and I'm here for this month's student report. So for our past events, on December eighteenth, Willets and Wheatley Band, we had our Willetts and Wheatley Band performances. On December twentieth, we had our International Unity Club's annual luncheon, which is a celebration of different cultures through diverse food and performances. As for our exciting upcoming events, on January twenty-third, we have our Driving in the Safeline presentation, which is a presentation mandatory for any junior or senior who will be requesting permission to drive to school this year, or for any senior who will be requesting off-campus privileges during the 2024-2025 school year. From January twenty-first to January twenty-fourth, we have our midterm exams. Good luck to all students who have exams that week. On January twenty-fifth, we have our city review, which is a fun and engaging annual show put on by our very own seniors. On January thirtieth, we have Dialogue Night, which is open to any parents or members of the community, including students. So this is basically an annual evening of discussion over a relevant modern topic, which is designed to boost community involvement and connection. Highly recommend. And finally, on February eleventh, we have our STEAM night, so all students kindergarten through seventh grade are welcome through ten this evening. It's full of lots of interactive learning experiences, and many of Wheatley's clubs are planning great activities. The event will be Mario Party themed. A lot of great stuff planned, so definitely recommend. Finally, just thank you and have a good night.
Thank you, as always, Sophia. With that, we'll roll into the super intense report, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Gately.
Sure, thank you. Welcome back. Happy New Year to all of you. I'd like to start by just announcing some information about the pre-K lottery, so Ms. Kastangue is going to fill in those details.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Gately. So the registration for the pre-K lottery for the twenty-five-twenty-six school year is now open. You can find the link to the page with the form you need to complete to be included in the lottery on our homepage under Bulletin Board towards the bottom of the page. Important dates to remember are fill that form out before Tuesday, January twenty-eighth at four P M. We will do in Central Office during the day on January thirtieth, the lottery. And on Friday, January thirty-first, we will notify all parents of their status and outcome of the lottery, if they are on the waitlist, or if they are one of the forty students who received a spot from the lottery.
Thank you. All right, so hot off the press, I'd like to talk about the calendar that is being recommended for the twenty-five-twenty-six school year. I can't believe we're talking about twenty-five-twenty-six already. It feels like the first day of school this year was yesterday. So the calendar that I'm recommending to the Board of Education tonight includes the first day of school on September second, Virtual Learning Day on November fourth, which is Election Day. We tried that this year, and we believe that it is worth continuing. The superintendent's Conference Day for Staff only will be on March twentieth. That is for Eid. That day will be closed for students, but again, only for staff. If there are no emergency days, weather days, snow days, things along those lines, school will be closed on Tuesday, May twenty-sixth, which is the day following Memorial Day. And you'll note on the calendar that that Wednesday is a day of no school. As always, it is anticipated that Wheatley Athletics will begin in late August, so Wheatley families of athletes for the fall season should plan on being back in town from any fun vacations. And as we like to remind you, this year, we are having a post-Labor Day start. Labor Day is early in September this year, but every year that might change. So there is quite a few factors that come into play when we are making and looking at that calendar. So while we are able to do that this year, just keep in mind that it won't always be possible going forward. That's the calendar. That'll be posted online tomorrow for everybody to see, should the board adopt it tonight. And at this time, really the most exciting part of the evening, I'd like to invite up Dr. Teseo, our Director of Mathematics, and our interim Director of Science. We have so many student accolades to share tonight.
Good evening, and thank you for having us this evening. Our students recently competed in the prestigious American Mathematics Competition, or AMC. The AMC is the first exam in a series of exams which are used to challenge students on the path towards choosing the team that represents the United States at the International Mathematics Olympiad. Two of our students qualified to advance to the next level, the American Invitational Exam, or the AME. In order to qualify for the AME, students have to score in the top five percent of the nation. This is no small feat. It's a reflection of their hard work, dedication, and exceptional problem-solving skills. But before we introduce these talented students, let me bring up the person who has been instrumental in guiding them on this journey, the coach of the athletes, Mr. Wu.
The AMC is one of the most rigorous mathematics exams available to high school students. Qualifying for the next round requires not only tremendous effort in the classroom, but also an incredible amount of dedication and preparation outside of class. So that's why I'm very pleased tonight to introduce our two qualifiers from the East Willetts School District, eighth grader Jayden Zoo. Jayden, will you please stand? Let's hear it for him. And Senior Dean Yang. Dean? So congratulations to them for their hard work and effort.
Thank you, Mr. Wu. The South American Women's Alliance is a nonprofit organization that seeks to encourage and promote leadership and innovation among students in STEM fields to help build tomorrow's workforce among the community. The South Asian American Women's Alliance sponsors various research competitions, one of which is an essay-writing competition through our research, excuse me, an essay-writing competition. Through our research course, Ms. Aid had students apply to this contest. I would like to ask her to join me at the podium to tell you more about this contest.
Good evening. This year, the SAWA essay prompt was, is artificial intelligence a threat to human job security at the present or in the future? Students were encouraged to write essays from their own experiences and use information from various articles they had read. We've swept the competition, with Wheatley students being awarded first, second, and third place. So I'd like for them to stand up, Amar Arif, Olivia Zhang, and Kyle Lau.
And lastly, the Regeneron Science Talent Search is the country's most prestigious research competition. This year, approximately two thousand five hundred students applied. We are thrilled to announce that one of our students was named one of the semifinalists. This honor places this student among the top young scientists in the nation, a testament to her hard work, creativity, and dedication to achieving scientific knowledge. Of course, such an accomplishment doesn't happen in isolation. Would you like to say a little bit more about the student?
So we, in the research world, affectionately call this the Nobel Prize of high school research. This is the top prize that so many of students, so many research students, are working toward. And Elena Pinto is no exception to that. She has spent the last two years researching under the direction of Dr. Dora's at Hofstra University. The application is a twenty-page research paper, and basically another full college application, because, you know, those are easy and so easy to do. But she did all of that, but during her time specifically for her research, she has spent countless hours under a microscope studying the pathology of glioblastoma, which is a fast-growing and aggressive brain tumor. And I'd like to invite her down to tell you a little bit more about her project.
Hi. So as Ms. Aid mentioned, glioblastoma is the most aggressive and common form of brain tumor in adults. The disease elevates the expression of interleukin thirty-two, more commonly known as IL-32, which is a protein that fuels metastasis, or the spread of cancer beyond point of origin. And the blood-brain barrier is a protective layer composed of claudin and oclopidin, junctional proteins that tightly hold the cellular membranes together and separating circulating blood from the brain. My study aimed to determine whether IL-32 degrades these proteins and how this directly affects the cellular barrier and nuclear structure. Human endothelial cells were treated with IL-32 for over thirty minutes, period, and then they were examined using fluorescent microscopy. And increased exposure to IL-32 led to internalization and loss of proteins, which weakened the cellular barrier. And the nuclei of the treated cells showed fragmentation and size changes, which indicated potential cancer progression and healthy cell death. And then the results at a molecular level indicate that metastasis of glioblastoma occurs beyond the blood-brain barrier and likely will in a human model. And so looking towards the future, we would like to investigate how IL-32 compromises the blood-brain barrier to fuel cancer progression, which may provide potential targets for glioblastoma treatment. And then also, more so delving into the changes in nuclear structure, will offer insights into potential patterns among the dynamic structure of cancer cells in various types and their progression. Thank you.
Please keep in mind, we asked Ms. Pinto to keep the conversation at a level that the rest of us would understand. So this is what we ended up with. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Teseo. In just a moment, we'll invite you all. We have certificates for all of you, and we'll invite you into the lobby, and Mr. Rosa will take some pictures. And we hope your teachers will join you for those photos as well. I just think it's important to note that out here in the audience, clapping loudly and smiling proudly are so many parents. And we are so proud of all the students, of course, for all your work in school and out of school. But we want to give a big thanks to your parents, too, for all of their support.
Dr. Gately really took my words, but we always love the opportunity to celebrate our students. It's such, we do so much here at the board table, but to have students come in front of us and celebrate their achievements across so many different areas within just being good human beings, it's really a wonderful opportunity. So not only do we celebrate our students, and not only do we celebrate our parents, but we celebrate our teachers, too, because we always like to say it's a big triangle effect that gets us all there to the endpoint, working together. So on behalf of the board, we congratulate you. We thank you for coming down. Don't forget to get your certificates and pictures in the lobby, of course. And yes, Danielle? We have certificates, we do.
They're on the podium.
And we'll bring them out to the lobby for them. So thank you very much and congratulations again.
All right. Thank you, and again, really so proud of all of you, and we can't wait to see what comes next. All right, and that concludes the superintendent's report.
Fantastic. Thank you. Okay, so that will move us into the board report, just to follow up in regards to the academic calendar. So there is the one draft that's being presented to the board, which the board will accept and put on to the district website for review as a draft. And then it's the board's intent to adopt this calendar at the February board meeting. So as a draft, it'll be posted effective tomorrow. It will note draft. Everything is subject to change, but I believe it will be the board's intent to adopt this at the February meeting, so we just wanted to share that. Since our last meeting, we only had one committee meet, which was the FAC, which was actually this evening, earlier tonight. Mr. Hirsch, is there any specifics you want to share with the community in regards to the FAC meeting?
Yeah, I think FAC meant Second Meeting. There'll be a couple more throughout the budget process, but this meeting focused just on just some of the highlights that in terms of program that may be proposed for the coming year. The things that were exciting to me was potential math competitions, graph competition opportunities actually at all three buildings, which would be great, more so than Willetts and Wheatley. And then the potential opportunity to have more robotics competitions, which would also be really will-attended. And I think the third thing that was interesting was a potential new eighth-grade community building trip, which I think we're still working through, but if that's proposed, I think that could be an exciting opportunity for incoming eighth graders. Other highlights were just sort of general, something of your interest on the mic, is what the enrollment may look like for twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, which seems to be fairly consistent with our enrollment this year, around sixteen hundred-ish. And budgets are still being built, and I think will be presented early March.
Thank you, Mr. Hirsch. I just want to add one item to the board report, if I may. The board had its annual building academic walkthrough last week. We've started to do this on a yearly basis where the superintendent invites us across all three buildings to observe and participate in a variety of different classroom experiences. And on behalf of the board, I can't express enough how incredible the experience was to not only see and place so many of these programs that we talk about during budget season, that we talk about here in this room on a presentation standpoint, but to really see the children live and going through it. It was really just such a wonderful experience and eye-opening. And really, we want to thank the superintendent and certainly Central Office for putting that together, as well as the building principals, but really the teachers that put all the work and effort in getting all of those efforts done. Really, thank you. It was a great experience, so thank you very much for that.
It was a pleasure. We're always happy to show off our staff and, of course, our students.
Okay. Any other board members have anything else they want to add?
If you're born, I can do a BOCES report.
Sure. That'd be great, Mr. Keefe. Thank you.
The BOCES budget for next year is well on its way to being put together. We had a virtual meeting in December, and we will have another meeting this week. I just got to give you some highlights exactly of our connection with what's going on in BOCES. For this year, the twenty-four-twenty-five school year, we elected to participate in twenty-five separate BOCES programs. For that twenty-five programs, we were charged the fee two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Out of that, we will receive state aid of a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars, thus reducing the cost, obviously, to about a hundred and one thousand dollars. The capital debt service and facilities rental for last year were charged for forty-seven thousand dollars, for which, again, East Willetts and will receive thirteen thousand dollars in state aid, reducing our share of the rental facilities to thirty-four thousand dollars. I'm going to note for all of you that all fifty-six school districts, to varying amounts of money, contribute to this capital fund and debt service to BOCES. Actual twenty-three-twenty-four BOCES aid was eight hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Then our projected aid for this year, twenty-four-twenty-five, is eight hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. BOCES, as all budgeters do, use projections for the budgets. Just some random examples of what BOCES has done. They have used their capital reserves, and they will use their capital reserves to reduce the cost for ERS and TRS expenses. We also do that. They are anticipating an increase in employee medical expenses. That's the night shift. They did note that the BOCES employees contribute twenty-five percent for this benefit. There is anticipation of an eight-and-a-half percent increase in the Part B retiree health costs, with about a five-point-seven percent increase in the cost for active employees. The resident weighted average daily attendance, which is the WADA, which all of the districts, they use that number to find out what they're going to contribute to the administrative budget. I won't go through the math of how it's done. I don't even know that I could do that anyway. But the overall twenty-five-twenty-six increase in the WADA is projected at point eighty-two percent. Again, that varies by district. So the point eighty-two percent is not necessarily what we would cost, we would pay, but for all of the districts in Nassau County. BOCES also benefits for the interest rates that are going on, so that they get more dollars in interest rates. They get dollars in E-rate reimbursement, and of course, they get grants from state and federal programs. The Nassau BOCES administrative budget, which is the budget that all school districts in Nassau contribute to, right now shows an increase for next year of about two-point-seven percent. Just note, as BOCES noted, that the WADA, which is the way they figure out we pay them, has been lowered each year since two thousand sixteen-seventeen, so that the increase, the cost of BOCES, really has been lowered each year as far as how they figure out what each district pays. The debt service for next year is projected to increase, BOCES debt service, point zero-five percent, which would give us an increase in total of point zero-one percent. We note that BOCES is still paying debt service on the Center for Curriculum in East Meadow. This is expected to be paid off and off the books by June thirty, twenty twenty-eight. About three million dollars is budgeted for this center in twenty-five-twenty-six. Workers' Corp is projecting higher premiums. BOCES maintains buildings in fifteen separate locations across Nassau. A projection of an increase of three-point-six percent is slated for natural gas, heating oil, and electrical expenses. We will be meeting to go over some of the other parts of the administrative budget. What is it, Thursday, Wednesdays, Thursday of this week? And sometime between that Thursday and when we meet again in February, I'll have another report for you. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Keefe. I can't thank you enough for going on behalf of this board to these BOCES budget meetings accordingly. So thank you for that information. Anyone have any questions in regards to that? Thank you. Okay, so with that, we will move into open time. No slips to first open time. Thank you, Christina. And we will move into the action items. I'm going to group action items three-point-one to three-point-eleven together, but before I take a second, I'm pulling item number three-point-four from the agenda. I'm pulling three-point-four. With that, I'll group three-point-one to three-point-eleven, less three-point-four. May I have a second? Mr. Falorino? Mr. Fallerino? Discussion. Seen and hearing no discussion, I'm going to call for the vote, all in favor. Items pass 5-0, thank you. I am going to take item 3.12 by itself, may I have a second? Mr. Keith, discussion. Seen and hearing no discussion, I'm going to call for the vote, all in favor. Mr. Fallerino? Item passes 5-0, thank you. Okay, I'm going to take item 4.1, may I have a second? Ms. Meggie, discussion, I'm going to turn to the superintendent.
Sure, I'd like to invite Ms. Pandolf and Dr. Mazza to share some thoughts about Emily.
Good evening and thank you. It is our honor to speak on behalf of Ms. Ramos this evening. This moment is not only a reflection of her dedication to the craft of teaching, but also our recognition of her exceptional contributions to our school community and our unwavering commitment to the students she serves. We have had the privilege of observing Ms. Ramos's growth and development as an educator, and we can confidently say that she embodies the qualities we all strive for as professionals in this field. Ms. Ramos joined the East Williston School District in February 2021 to support a newly-opened, integrated co-teaching classroom setting at the Northside School. And she remained as a co-teacher in ICT at Northside for the subsequent two school years. This year, Ms. Ramos serves as a special education teacher in a special class at Northside. She holds New York State Certification in Childhood Education, grades 1 through 6, and Students with Disabilities grades 1 through 6, and is working on earning her certification in Students with Disabilities birth to grade 2. She has earned a Bachelor of Arts in Childhood Education and Psychology from CUNY City College of New York, and a Master of Science in Education in Childhood Special Education from Queens College. Ms. Ramos applies, applies her education and experience to the various roles she has played at the Northside School. She is a teacher who takes great pride in meeting the individual needs of her students. Whether she's working in an integrated co-teaching setting or within a special class environment, Ms. Ramos demonstrates a deep understanding of the diverse needs of her students and the pedagogical approaches that best support them. She is skilled at differentiating instruction and using a variety of teaching methods to ensure that every student has access to meaningful learning. Ms. Ramos's ability to work collaboratively with her co-teachers and teaching assistants is another testament to her skill and professionalism. She understands the importance of clear communication and role clarity, ensuring that everyone in the classroom, from her teaching assistants to her students, understand their role in the learning process.
In every role at Northside, Ms. Ramos consistently sets high expectations for her students, firmly believing in each child's potential. She is an advocate for her students, pushing them to try new things, and supports their academics as they master new content. Her unwavering commitment to student, student success guides them to reach significant milestones. Ms. Ramos embodies kindness, flexibility, and genuine care. Her collaborative spirit and adaptability have made her an invaluable partner to her colleagues, fostering a supportive and inclusive learning environment for all. Ms. Ramos's dedication and positive impact on our school community are truly commendable. As Ms. Ramos continues her career in the East Williston School District, we have no doubt that she will continue to inspire, challenge, and support her students. She is a teacher who brings her passion and knowledge to her work every single day. Her commitment to our students and her craft is truly commendable, and it is with confidence that we support the recommendation for tenure in the East Williston School District. We are personally looking forward to many more years of collaborating with you, and our students are fortunate to have such a supportive and inspiring educator guiding them.
That was pretty good.
It's all true.
It, it is expected that this vote will be adopted this evening, and certainly Ms. Ramos, we want to invite you to the tenure reception that takes place in April with the balance of ten years for the school year. Sometimes these don't always align, but we want to celebrate you equally that evening as we celebrate our other tenure. Any other discussion from the Board? Seen, no hearing, seen and hearing no further discussion, I'm going to call for the vote, all in favor. Item passes 5-0, congratulations.
Ms. Ramos, we hope you'll go outside and take a picture for our newsletter.
Thank you.
Jamie and Dr. Mazza, you're welcome to join.
Okay, I'm going to group items 5.1 and 5.2 together, may I have a second? Mr. Keith, discussion. Seen and hearing no further discussion, I'm going to call for the vote, all in favor. Items pass 5-0, thank you. I'm going to group items 6.1 and 6.2 together, may I have a second? Mr. Hirsch, discussion. Seen and hearing no discussion, I'm going to call for the vote, all in favor. Items pass 5-0, thank you. Thank you. I have a change on 7-1, I just want to make a change to the resolution before we adopt. It should read, "Recommendation to appoint Kara Skolnick as probationary special education teacher, Step 2M15 for Northside School, effective January 21, 2025." So I also believe that this will most likely pass this evening too, so Ms. Skolnick, where are you? Right, so we'd just like you to stand and wave after it's adopted, just want to make sure. First, let me take a second, I'm going to group items 7.1 through 7.6 together, 7.1 as amended. May I have a second? Mr. Fallerino, discussion. We hope that, we welcome you to East Williston, we really hope you find this to be as an incredible place as so many people that are here truly do. So we wish you luck in your path here on East Williston. Any other discussion? Seen and hearing no discussion, call for the vote, all in favor, 7.1 to 7.6. Items pass 5-0, congratulations and welcome. Thank you. Okay, that brings me to the second open time. Do we have any slips? No slips? Okay, seen, no slips, I'm going to make a motion to adjourn. May I have a second? Mr. Fallerino, discussion. Seen and hearing no discussion, I'm going to call for the vote, all in favor. Items pass